Nothing like a little box to get you started.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to the digital roundtable. The crew is here and we got an amazing guest speaker today. Obviously, we have, you know, Llewellyn King, our own king. We have John Butler. And today's guest is an old friend and a fantastic human being, Bridget Shade, Travis County Commissioner. And Bridget has, has an amazing career and she's trying to transform and drive so many cool things that we're going to talk about. But Bridget, how are you?
I'm doing fabulous despite being, you know, sequestered at home for what, four months now? But doing great. Actually, thanks to this kind of technology, it's really amazing how it enables us to connect from wherever we are.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we have talked many times in this, in our talk show here that COVID-19 has incredibly serious consequences and then many, and many of those are pretty sad and dire. And but it's also created an acceleration on digital technologies and their use and enforced new thinking about business models. And, and so we are very excited about exploring that with you and sharing some of the things. So, so let me, let me get us all started with an update on things and then we'll start getting your guys' feedback and, and ideas and comments on things. But around the COVID, you know, update, you know, things are trending up unfortunately nationwide. You know, another 5,000 people passed last week. That's terrible, but you know, it's trending up slightly in terms of cases. It's trending up slightly also. Almost half a million new cases since last week. So, you know, clearly there's a lot of shifting going on and now everybody's cool with the mask and everybody's cool with a lot of things that we should have been cooler with, but you know, it is what it is. And the question is, how do we move forward? And this stock market today is a little up about 100 points. New York Stock Exchange is up 180, NASDAQ is up 190. Crude oil is up $7.54, which is good for all those that make a living in, in the U.S. Trying to make, you know, oil exports. The price of gas in Austin is down 10 cents from last week, which is kind of interesting again. And thinking that a lot of people are driving more and more, maybe the price of gas will go up, but it apparently it's not. So that's a good thing if you're traveling on the road. And then May unemployment figures were revised. Last time we talked, the May figures were 11.1%. And again, these are, there's always a debate about what these unemployment figures look like, but it's been revised to 16.4, which is higher than April, which was 14.7. So we're actually not recovering as fast as we thought. And there are more folks being unemployed and perhaps, you know, a lot of what we have talked about is unfortunately, COVID has given companies the opportunity to resize their corporations, to rethink their leases in commercial spaces, and there's a significant shift going on. So, so Bridget, tell us what's your, what's your take in the county? What's happening with COVID? You know, how, how, how negative is the impact on taxes? What, what is it looking like? I mean, I didn't know it's hard to be a predictor of the future and where things are heading. But, you know, you, you, you have a unique view of what's happening. So tell us what, what's going on with COVID.
Well, the interesting thing for us, which a lot of people experienced at the beginning of the pandemic, when we all, you know, responded to the stay home, work safe, shelter in place order. We had to shift our entire county operations to as much online as we could. And I think county government is probably, I'm going to say a little slower than some of the other, than a lot of municipal governments. We have, we have a tax office, for instance, that's very active. It's probably where the most people interact with the county government.
Right.
And they do a lot of face-to-face stuff, but they've been pushing people for years. Tax assessor, Dr. Bruce Elfand is famous for saying, you know, does anybody go to a travel agency anymore to get your plane ticket? No, we do it all online and we download it or we put it on our phone and we do it virtually. So that's what we want you to do with paying your taxes in the tax office. So now because of COVID, so much more has had to shift online. And that's been a, that's been eye-opening, I think, in many ways. One of which is to realize, hey, we can be super efficient online. And we, you know, we might've gotten there eventually, but now we're forced to because of the, essentially the quarantining, the stay-at-home-and-be-safe effect of the pandemic. So that's been valuable on many, many levels. And one of the things that I've pushed for and we, the court has supported is to pursue achieving a 75% telecommuting goal among eligible county employees on an ongoing basis. Not just when we're, you know, in a, in a disaster situation. And so we, we adopted that. That's roughly about 3,000 employees are eligible, meaning they don't have to physically be at work to do their job. So obviously corrections officers are not on that list. The sheriff's deputies, the star flight, the medical examiner, people who physically have to be in their jobs and some folks at the tax office. But we are aggressively pursuing that and then trying to build in the infrastructure to sustain it so that it will function on an ongoing basis and it can be fairly permanent. So that's been the kind of biggest awareness for us. And I think probably everybody in their own communities has experienced this. Did you notice how we solved all the traffic congestion problems overnight when everyone went to telecommuting?
Yeah.
I mean, I've driven on I-35 at rush hour and I actually put my phone on the dash and recorded it because it was such an amazing experience. There was no delay. There was no congestion.
Right.
And, and there's still a pretty, I would say noticeable reduction in a traffic congestion today. So this is another thing that I've urged text to take more seriously. They've always had in their toolkit for transportation planning, a tiny little column for transportation or traffic demand management. And in that little toolkit is telecommuting, but nobody's taking it seriously. Nobody's done it on a large scale. And now I think we're finding this works really well.
Yeah.
And people, what the really interesting thing they're finding in the county and I suspect elsewhere, people are more productive. They're wasting time stuck in traffic trying to get to and from work. They can start work much more quickly. And I've heard this from a number of employees, they're able to concentrate better. They don't have to deal with the kind of routine, kind of water cooler interruptions or people stopping by to chit chat. And our auditor's office has documented an increase in productivity. So, and there was just a story the other day about the volatility in the commercial office market. I think this is going to have a big impact on commercial office space.
Right.
So that's, that's been probably one of the big takeaways from, from the county. And, and the, the great benefit for the community is we have largely solved our congestion problems overnight without spending all our treasure and without gumming everything up during the construction phase.
Yeah. John, John, any thoughts? You want to ask any questions?
Well, absolutely. I think that this is a living case study that we've been talking about on this program for the last month or so. And we asked a very, very basic kind of organizational question or organization science question. It is, you know, what would be the impact on new business model? And so we have the county here leading the way in terms of getting new business models, saying that 70%, we're going to stay, we're going to stay on Zoom, looking at the volatility, if you will, and how volatile would be of, of, of the market for, for office space. And then looking at how, how, how pretty and city Llewellyn, our great city of Austin is in the great state of Texas. That's a private thing, Bridget.
Do you have some sense of purity about this that you have to mention it every time?
Right.
People in New York don't say, oh, I'm lucky I'm the great city of New York or London or Paris.
You know, they're, they're a great city, they're a great city like Austin. And I'll tell you, sitting here with one that helped to build it. So we don't want to get into that. Let me just say this also. I think that the other thing with, with the COVID, since we're talking about that, isn't it, isn't it wonderful? How you look at the interplay between science and politics and what we really believe in? You know, I can remember going to, you know, Whole Foods and, and looking at their, their medicine cabinet, you know, and people are asking somebody that's 12 years old, 18 years old, what should I take for a headache? So I think one of the interesting things that's happening here as we look at the numbers and remember that our numbers here are the people who are dying. The fact that it's going up with, with the testing, that should be expected. But we want a ratio to be, you know, lots of testing and, and not, and not many deaths. But also I think that if you look at what, what the commissioner has said, Commissioner Shea has said, you know, there's, there's almost an automatic social distancing in, in what we've done here. And what that does also is not take care of the virus, but it also cleans up the city. The traffic is not as bad. We don't have, have a big dig yet, right, in Austin, Texas. But the biggest thing that we think about in Austin is, I mean, we have gone from no buildings to 18 skyscrapers in five years in Austin, Texas. And I think, you know, people working downtown, people coming together. And my question to the, to the commissioner is this, what do you think this is going to do with property in the county?
Well, I, you know, our, our county office building is at 7th and Lavaca. So from the day, literally the day I took office in January of 2015, there's been non-stop construction all around my office. So the UT administration building got built across the street. Kitty corner from our, our building on the northwest corner of 7th and Lavaca, the new Indeed Tower is being built. And it'll be very interesting to see what happens with that because there was a lot of pressure on the teacher retirement system to not move into luxury headquarters and spend, what, $4 million a year on rent? Even though they're, they'll be a big owner of the building. It'll be very interesting to see if they can find a replacement tenant since TRS got shamed out of occupying that office tower. So that's one to watch. There was an announcement with the filing of the development applications that the Masonic, the old Masonic Lodge building immediately south across 7th Street from the Travis County Building at 7th and Lavaca was going to be basically built on top of, adding another 26 stories on top of the historic Masonic, I think two or three story building on the bottom. I'll be really interested to see if that project goes forward anytime soon because there's such a screeching halt to people using commercial office space. The story in the paper on Sunday laid out a lot of companies that have cut back and have canceled their contracts for their commercial office leases or are subletting them. So I, I think we're going to continue to see a, a huge impact on the commercial office market. And I jokingly said to people, you know, actually, maybe we could convert some of that into affordable housing since there's such a huge need and all that space would be going unused in parts of the downtown. And definitely the parking garages, the parking garages are largely empty. I mean, we get some revenue from our Travis County parking garage and we've seen nothing because nobody's going downtown. So I suspect you'll also see impacts to some of the bars and the restaurants that have relied on the downtown office market foot traffic. So I think we're going to see some, some big transitions. And I noted in your news alerts, Andres, Yelp, I think, said that 53% of all restaurants have gone out of business. Is that just in the Austin market or is that worldwide or nationwide or what?
Nationwide.
Yeah. I mean, we're seeing it in Austin, some, some old favorites and some landmarks that are really tragic. But I think we're going to see huge shifts.
Yeah, very significant. That's a very significant stat. Llewellyn, what do you think?
Well, I think that, you know, we're just getting to grips with the beginning of the change. We're not halfway through the changes. We're at the beginning. And we don't know the impact of an awful lot of things, existential, you might say. Clearly, more people will work from home. I doubt that it'll be a total revolution. People meet people, people work together, the intercourse between people, the water cooler across the desk. All of these things are very important and you can't totally put a computer screen between them. Some people are happy working at home and productive, others are very unhappy and unproductive. I'm a, I brought the light, I'm a gregarious person to some extent. I, I'm a commentator. I work at home mostly. I'm a journalist. I don't have a staff anymore. I work at home mostly, but I go down to Sirius XM radio when I'm in Washington. I'm a commentator. And I just love to go in and just the fact that other people there, you can josh a bit, you can laugh a bit. There's a certain humanity in it that when you, you know, totally reduce yourself to the efficiency of telecommunications, you've also eradicated a large part of what makes us human beings and happiness human beings. And also not everybody, and I was doing a television program yesterday, well, this weekend, on the problems of a shortage of broadband in rural America, where, which is now acute and very bothersome because people cannot school without broadband. They cannot do a lot of things without broadband. Takes you to the whole issue of the digital divide. It's very worth well to say that people will work from home, supposing you're homeless. And a lot of homeless who have jobs, they won't have jobs because there's no place to go. But some of the changes will become, I do agree with Bridget, we're not going to need all the retail space we've needed, not all the office space. There's going to be a big shakeout in real estate, commercial real estate. There will be some conversions to affordable housing, as Bridget said. I have talked to architects about this. Often it's a bigger job to repurpose a building than it is to tear it down and build a new one with the purpose that you now intend it for. This is particularly true of the big box stores, which in theory could be turned into living space, but in reality are not plum for it. There's no, there's not enough water stacks, not ways to get sewage in, out and water in, all of these things that make for a livable space before you put up the walls. So the changes are vast. A big concern at the moment, I think, is this tsunami of foreclosures, unemployed, unpaid credit card bills. I call it the debt bond. It will go off. There will be catastrophic results from it. We're insulated because of the actions of the government, which are right and proper and needed, but it cannot go on forever. Unpaid rents, unpaid utility bills, unpaid credit cards. These are building into a great problem for the future.
Yeah.
And it's going to hit us very hard. Also, the permanent unemployment, if you look, went up a little bit, down again, but there is some structural unemployment. You can't close 53% of the restaurants in the country and not say there'll be a lot of cooks, chefs, matron details and little ordinary people who serve out of work. And a lot of those people are skilled and at work and that is all. They're not easily going to suddenly start writing code, you know. So there's going to be a big and difficult period of adjustment. And I'm sure that it will all come right eventually, but there'll be pain, stress, and they'll be changing horizons. It is very difficult to persuade people that you cannot go back to the status quo and that things are going to be new, different, better for some, worse for others. That's what happens in a revolutionary situation. And this is a revolutionary, not an evolutionary situation.
I agree, I agree. Interesting times, right? And we have to find ways to remain creative and proactive about the solutions. So, so I want to share with you some of the things that are happening, right? Again, we talked a lot, we're always about telecom being connected is sort of the big enabler of all this digital stuff. And, and we all know that 5G is coming. And so one of the things that we have discussed many times is the fact that when people think about telecom and 5G, they only think about AT&amp;T and Verizon. And one of the things that is going to happen with Internet of Things is really the, the birth of 10,000 new carriers. They're going to be focused only on the private sector. So Nokia just this week announced a new program where they're going to commercialize the same equipment that they give to AT&amp;T and Verizon. Now it's available for anybody who wants to get a license from the FCC and build their own private carrier IoT network anywhere in the middle of nowhere to fulfill any dream. And so, so I know Bridget, that broadband access in the county is a big thing. What's your, what's your thoughts on where 5G is going to play on that? And will, will Travis County be built like LA County and have 6 million people in 20 years?
You know, there's an awful lot of for, for our region's growth. And, and I'll just say, one of the pieces that I think is frequently missing is the calculation about the number of people who currently live on our coastlines who will be forced to move inland because of both rising seas and the impacts of storm surge events that just make the coastal areas or will increasingly unlivable. So I think we will see a very, very large increase in population over time. And what worries me is I don't see our planners realistically looking at what we will need to do to stretch, for instance, our water supply, like really basic stuff. Because you can't, you simply can't handle huge increases in the population if you don't have enough of a water supply for them. But the other, the other reality, and this isn't so much digital, but to me it's part of the deeper analysis that we need to be doing across the board. Virtually every place on the planet wastes water on an epic scale. And in hot, dry areas like we are in, the largest use and the largest waste of treated drinking water is for our air conditioning systems. All our large buildings use massive amounts of water that is evaporated off in order to cool the large buildings. So just a really quick story on that. For our Travis County Buildings in the downtown, we've converted all of the water supply for our air conditioning systems for our four large cities along that Lavaca-Guadalupe 11th Street sector to using purple pipes. The city of Austin is building out a pipe network of purple pipe, which is treated wastewater for non-potable uses. So we swapped out four buildings in the downtown that the county uses for the courthouse, our administration building, our district attorneys or county attorneys and the criminal justice complex, central booking, all that, the courtrooms. We swapped out those four buildings to use purple pipe or treated wastewater for the water supply for the air conditioning. And we've permanently reduced the demand every year for 10 million gallons of water. And no one notices because nobody's drinking the air conditioning water. So if, if we could convince the state Capitol, and I've been working on this for a while, but I haven't managed, and the University of Texas, same with UT, John, maybe you can start having this conversation with more people. They've only converted one of their central chillers to purple pipe, but not the other four. But if we could convince UT and the state Capitol complex and some other big buildings in the downtown to switch to purple pipe for the air conditioning, air conditioning system, we could permanently reduce the demand for more than a billion gallons of water every year. That's like a super simple thing that can be done. Oh, and by the way, it's cheaper. The purple pipe water is cheaper than the treated drinking water. So lots of reasons to do it. But that to me is one of the structural things that we've got to be doing to better prepare our communities for the crush of all the growth that's, that's going to be coming. But the county in terms of digital, I would say that is not, we're not building out that infrastructure at a county level. We don't control the franchise awards. The city really does that. So we don't have the ability at that regulatory level to, for instance, insist to an AT&amp;T or Verizon or whomever that they must provide more complete coverage. I'll tell you where we saw problems with it though. When we all moved to shelter at home and we shut down the schools, there were a lot of communities that did not have access to Wi-Fi because they were outside the network. And so the school district had to put hotspots on buses and go park the buses in those neighborhoods. So those families could access the internet and get their, you know, their schooling via the internet. So there is a huge need. The county's just not a major player in that arena. I mean, we may be at some point in the future, but I don't, I don't see it as one of our sort of government stacks, if you will.
That's fascinating, really fascinating, not the part of the school district having to use buses, hotspots because there wasn't enough broadband. I think we're going to hear a lot about broadband in the next year or so, particularly when we see the problems that are getting even down there. And we're not going to see all the schools open until we have vaccination as a standard possibility against this virus. It's going to be a very, very difficult time, terrible time for parents, a pretty awful time for children who want to have their friends, the normal socialization. I work for a producer at Sirius XM and she has three small girls at home. And she said, you know, we have the best books and we do everything we can for them. But what do you say to a child when she says, mommy, I'm bored? Very difficult. We didn't grow up like that. We dealt with boredom was not part of our challenge as children. And I think it's very, very difficult for teenagers too. We criticize them a lot for not wearing masks, not social distancing and all of these things. A lot of cavalier about it and it's reasonable to get extremely angry with them, but they're teenagers. They, these are the, these are the high years of.
They miss their friends.
It's very difficult to say behave and enjoy working at home and stay away from your friends. It's very difficult, hopefully. This is here, natural hope. We don't know yet. We will get an inoculation that works. It will be produced in enough quantity. People will use it and we will look back on the virus as we look back on COVID. But it will not be a return to the world we had. It will be a different world, different employment, different ways of working, different values. Some will rise to the top, some will fall. To expect that it's going to be just as it has been is a, it's really very dangerous thing to do. We're not certain we're going to get a vaccination that works. I've talked to a lot of people about it. I was on the telephone and on the, and one of these hookups yesterday with a very promising, brilliant woman in California who's working. She's quite confident we'll get it. Their early tests are very encouraging. The Oxford tests in England are very, Madonna's test is very encouraging. And then we're going to have a free fall. There are 100 major companies working on vaccines. What happens? Who's going to get the market share? This is going to be a rush. And, you know, the government may be required to pick the winners and losers. We hate to hear that the government is picking winners and losers, but it may have to give preference to one vaccine over another. And probably availability and the ability to mass produce it and to deploy it and to administer it fairly easily. If it can be administered orally, which most of us, it's very unlikely, probably by, by injection, which is not too bad. But if it has to be administered intravenously with a drip, we have to train people to do that. We don't know how to do that. I mean, the doctors do and nurses do, but there aren't enough of them. They've worked to death as it is. We're going to have a change in our medical structure. There's going to be more curiosity about epidemic diseases, less of a desire to be on the front lines for the chance of dying. Big changes. Every aspect of our life is going to change, almost without, without exemption. Education is going to change. Some universities, the small ones are going to fail. There's a possibility because of all the online learning that you'll get, what the writer Peter Morisius described as star assistants, where a particular professor like Johnny, who's good on television, will get hundreds of thousands of people. Who's good on television will get hundreds of thousands of people. And people who are not so good on television will have no students. You know, I can see Johnny becoming a national figure and people just dying to get into his courses. I believe that's a course out of MIT on biology. That has 138,000 registered viewers now. So it's going to change. Morisius looked at this and it's very disturbing. He was until he retired a professor himself, but he, he, he does not see it. As returning in any way to the situation that once prevailed. It's going to be sort of like Coca-Cola dominates soft drinks. Particular universities able to reach students around the globe will find a new business model, a new way of charging. And will prosper. Others will suffer. The, the one-on-one, the tutorial, that's probably a thing of the past or the most students have been in the past.
All right, Johnny, take me back to 5G.
Yes, let me take you back to 5G. I think what's interesting is that. When you're talking about the pipeline and the blue pipeline. What's going to really, really get us to be much, much more, much better and more efficient, as I like to say. It would be the smart system. It would be the internet of things. Can you imagine what you've just described with the pipe, with the blue pipe? That everything, you could control it, you can understand it. So everything would be much, much better to control. We will have not only the issue of water. We'll know where every bit of water is. We know where every bit of electricity is. As people move into the city and it begins to expand. Then we can do the equations, if you will, or we can look at the big data and say. We need this now, but we don't need this now. One of the interesting things about air conditioning, can you imagine a situation where. Throughout the city, the air conditioner itself just cuts off. Not, not based on what we do now, but on the whole system of when it's supposed to come back home. Can you imagine that red lights would be smart? Can you imagine that stop signs would be smart? All of this would give us a much better opportunity to, to manage, if you will, the system. So the 5G stuff, which I think everybody commissioner should be involved in. Your smart, your smart homes, your smart buildings, your smart water, your smart electricity. The 5G and, and, and given the fact that what Nokia has done. Is allow anybody to get into it, quote unquote. So I think the 5G would give us a much better way of managing what I call the socio-physics, if you will, of the city.
Absolutely. Let me, let me take a quick break and go to my plug on our annual event. Real quick, if you can see my screen now, everybody. So the Dr. 67 is coming. It's August 18th, 19th and 20th on the first week, six sessions. And then the following week, the 25th, 26th, 27th, another six sessions. We have over 70 speakers confirmed now. Roughly 1,000 people register, 16 keynotes, 11 panels. And I was thinking, Commissioner, if you were inclined to participate and join us, perhaps. You could join the smart cities, smart counties, smart town. Panel, which is, I believe on the 20th. If you are available, I'm not going to put you on the spot on that right now, but.
I'd love to, if I can, I'll be, I'm actually going to be working remotely from Colorado. For a big part of August, I'll be back on the 20th. Or the 24th, but I, I should be able to participate.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all in Zoom, so you know, it, it would be, it would be fantastic to have you. I think what's going on with energy and water and all the things that you're pushing. And been driving forever really is fundamental to sort of the building blocks of energy of the future, cities of the future, buildings of the future. I love the whole purple buildings and you know, as you remember, I, I worked at Austin Energy. We created all the chilling downtowns or the buildings wouldn't have the air conditioning and anything, so. It's, it's, yeah, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the 20th at 2:00 PM. So I'll send you, I'll send you the info. You're, we would love to have you.
I'd love it if I could. That'd be fabulous.
Absolutely. And, and this are the kind of companies that are speaking at the conference. If you have not registered yet and, and you're listening and you have missed it out. It's going to be a phenomenal, really digital, you know. Sort of festival online, if you will, if you think about it. And I want to thank Texas State University for sponsoring our digital roundtable. So let me come back real quick. And talk and get your take on something that is, I think it's really fascinating. So, so you've probably heard what's going on with, there's different things happening, reacting to COVID. And, and price, you know, the fact that, you know, we, we are, I think, at some point, somebody said downtown in a council meeting. Though the success of Austin is tremendous, but the only thing, the downfall of it is that we're exporting, exporting poverty. Because people can't afford to live in the city anymore. So one of the things that is interesting is Uber just acquired another company called Route, Route Match in Atlanta. That is a company that provides city services for connectivity, scheduling across the world. They have like 500 customers. So one of the things that is really interesting, and I want to get you back into the several topics here, but Uber is positioning themselves. You know, they did a deal with Moran County. Where they're basically taking over the public transportation system in Moran County as a private company. In using their scheduling and the business model of. Other people own the cars and the trucks and the, and the, and the what have you. And it's in creating, you know, transportation. In, in partnership with the county, in the case of Moran County, I think that that would be, it's an interesting thing to, to get your feedback, Commissioner. The other thing that I think is fascinating, this probably hits home with you also. Is Apple has agreed to invest $2.5 billion in California to, to help with affordable housing. They just actually released $400 million for that. So the Indeed's of the world, the Googles of the world, all these companies that are dominating downtown. Maybe that's something to think about, right? And then the city of Seattle. Had just released a new program called Digital Bridge. Where they are, and I would call it Digital Bridgette if we did it in Travis County. But the Digital Bridge. It's a program where the city lands, it provides internet access either via coupon or a password or something. In a computer to folks that are looking for jobs or needing to retrain and change their lives. As Llewellyn said, a lot of people are being displaced. And how do they become, how do they acquire these digital skills? And then the, the, the other last two points that I want to make, and you have this in front of you. Is there's an architecture firm that just submitted a proposal to New York City Council. On reimagining downtown Manhattan without cars. So the, the vehicle infrastructure, you know, roads, sideways, parking. Takes roughly 30% of the living usable space downtown. What if that 30% reuse, reused space could be reused and reimagined in a different way? So I want to take your, your thoughts on that, Commissioner. Any, anything that pops in your mind on anything?
You know, I, at some conference somewhere, I saw a really fascinating presentation on the, essentially the evolution of how we. Roadways. That initially they were for people walking and then they were for people with horses. And then they were for horse drawn carts and then they were for, you know, for horse drawn buggies. And then, and then the horseless carriage came along. And suddenly you couldn't safely have people also using the same roadways. And slowly, over time, I think we've all accepted the dogma that, that the roads are for, for cars. And so it's, there's been interesting efforts along the way to try and reclaim roads for bicycles and for. You know, scooters and other kinds of transportation. So, you know. We hear that the pandemics will continue. But this is not an aberration. And so if, if part of our future is living in a world where we can't. Be in close proximity to each other because of the danger of getting infected or infecting other people. We're going to have to really rethink all kinds of things. It changes all the assumptions about mass transit. Changes the assumptions about. You know, being able to be out in public and getting a bite to eat somewhere, having a drink somewhere, visiting with friends. So I, I just think that we, we at least have to be willing to think about some of this differently. And I completely agree with what Llewellyn said earlier, that humans, I think humans mostly need human interaction. I think we are, we're herd animals in a lot of ways, but. I, I, it's fascinating. It's a, it's a really interesting idea. All of our coastal great cities in the world are going to have to completely rethink. How they manage to coexist with, with rising seas. So they're, they're going to have to change a lot of, some of the architecture in, in those cities. But this, but this is an interesting one. And I think actually the city council had. Taken some actions to designate certain streets as majority bike and pedestrian thoroughfares. Especially with the quarantine or the semi-quarantine where there's just much less traffic and there's no bar or very little bar and restaurant activity. So I think we're, we're seeing little pieces of that around the edges in, in Austin. But I think all over the world, every coastal city is going to have to completely rethink.
What, what are your thoughts on Uber striking a deal with Moran County and trying to become this, this next generation public transportation partner?
Well, I, I'll tell you in my limited experience with Uber, they have not been particularly concerned about consumer complaints. And I will say, as someone who's been on the city council and now on the county commission and who I believe strongly in government. I believe it is the responsibility of, of government to take care of people who can't take care of themselves. I don't think that's Uber's model. So it would be very interesting to see what kind of structure they'd have in place for people to be able to. Hold Uber accountable. And I, I have not seen any meaningful accountability with them to date. And I'm kind of surprised, Marin County doesn't strike me as a place that wouldn't be able to afford to pay for their own transportation operation. So I'm a little surprised if they're having Uber take over their entire. Transit.
Yeah.
You know, maybe it, maybe it makes more sense than having buses a rail running from fixed routes to have, you know. Disseminated individual pods everywhere. But to me, the accountability piece of it is, is really important. And then the other, the other piece of it, when you, when you outsource government functions to private industry. A lot of people lose jobs. And with the Uber jobs, I mean, we, we see that they are, they're not a living wage. They don't provide any healthcare. They're not what you would call a great job with a real prospect for getting yourself in a better place in the future.
John.
Let's talk about these cities and the laws of economics, which is something, when we plan Austin, when George Kosmetsky planned Austin like it is. And top of the Macomb School of Business in the late 1970s, we knew that Austin would be a different kind of city. You cannot go against the laws of economics. So I called my friends out in Silicon Valley. And I said, we have affordable housing problem. And they said, well, we went through that 20 years ago. Now we're trying to figure out where we're going to park all these private jets. So what you have to do is go to a model where what they're doing is, I mean, in the, in the early days, Esso. That's Exxon for you, for you young people. Esso created their own communities. Ford Motor Company created their own community. At Stanford University to be a professor, they have subsidized housing for faculty and we need to do that in Austin, Texas. But you cannot go against the laws of economics. If I bought an affordable housing unit myself. And it was great. Then all of a sudden, Llewellyn want to come and give me four times what it's worth, I'm going to sell it. Okay? So one of the things we have to live is we might be another Manhattan. You can't live here. We might be another Silicon Valley. You cannot live here. The people who were here before everything started really, really breaking and own property, right? They are selling and they're making all kinds of money. I have, you know, I laugh at people when they talk about East Austin. I said, if somebody is going to give you, you know, $800,000 to a house, for a house that your parents paid. You know, $2 for, take it and move where you want to move. So going against the laws of economics is, is a fallacy in American cities. There are many American cities where, where you cannot live. The other thing I think is that if you look at what we really, really need to do. Is the companies that come here, we need to change to shared prosperity. Something that we really did in Austin. So we, we, we replace unions, right? When Michael Dalewood public, he created 800, 932 millionaires in Austin, that is, that is. People with 30 million in the bank. When John Mackey took Whole Foods to a certain level, the same thing. So what we said was when you build your company in Austin, Texas. You know, you can't do like Uber. You've got to take care of the people themselves. Because we have talked in here, here, Commissioner. About, about the gig economy that has to be changed. There's, there's no safety net there. So I think going against the laws of economics is, is a dangerous thing. And I don't want to see my city of Austin become the people's republic of, of Austin. And we really, really have to look at how to have shared prosperity. Now, so if we have, if we have Uber coming here. Or if we have somebody else coming here, I think they're coming here, but I won't, I won't name the name. Electric car company that's coming here.
And we just did the contract.
They got to engage and share. Yeah, don't give me this stuff that, look, my students want to go to Manhattan, but how do you live in Manhattan? You, you gotta make $600,000 a year just to live, plus play babysitting. Plus send your kids to, to, to a daycare where they're trying to get in Ivy League at the age of six. So I think Austin is changing, but that's okay. Okay? And also think, remember this, one other thing. Silicon Valley was created by Boston in 128, okay? Austin, Texas was created by Silicon Valley. Why? Because as Silicon Valley grew, people moved here. They did not want people in 128 in Boston, so they went to Silicon Valley. And you're going to look at Round Rock. You're going to look at other cities that would become the business hub for Texas in the future. And there will be a continuous growth of business enterprises. Because when I go to Silicon Valley, they said, Dr. Butler, we need to go three blocks. We, we, we need to leave now. It's about an hour drive for three blocks. I can tell you about in Austin, Texas, where there were no opportunities, Commissioner. And nobody was on the street because there was nowhere to go. There were no jobs. So what comes with Kosmetsky City, the, the technopolis, as we call it. Is a lot of traffic, a lot of wealth and a lot of change. So let's not go against the rules of economics. And let's look at the expansion of the great city of Austin, Texas. And let's not try to kill Kosmetsky's dream. Commissioner, take that back to the city council and take that back. And take that back to the commissioner's court. Well, I know you don't agree with it, so I know.
Not only, in part perhaps. The thing is that the commissioner is totally correct. Duty of government is take care of those who cannot take care of themselves. And that does not go away. Economics will reduce the phenomenon of gentrification. Which had a debilitating impact on minority communities. I used to live in an area of Virginia that had been on the Underground Railroad. And there were a lot of small shack-like houses, but nonetheless, they were privately owned. In came the, the, the people who had made money elsewhere, bought them up. And these people never again will own a home.
But just remember this, gentrification means. People with means. It doesn't, it didn't have anything to do with.
A sad thing and detrimental to the interests of the community as a whole. As for Uber taking over transportation, that's fascinating because the thing isn't about Uber. It's about what Uber is about, which is sloughing all the capital cost of transportation. Onto the employees and it works quite well. But Uber is not executing it as well or as kindly as it might be executed. But within that is the kernel of a future transportation system. where people with the capital boats, i.e. the vans, the trucks, the can be, uh, brought into public transportation. And the cities and the counties will be relieved of the responsibility for running huge fleets. But it will have to be managed. It will have to be carefully managed. But within that is the kernel of a future. As to totally pedestrian cities, uh, London has what they call a community charge, which means that you have to pay a lot of money to bring a private car in, but it still has horrendous traffic. Singapore introduced this many, many years ago throughout France. It's often out front. And I haven't been there for quite a long time, but the congestion was controlled, but it's a relatively small city. The future of cities is different transportation. It includes scooters, which we have laughed about and which we have also hated because we've tripped over them on the sidewalk or we've heard about people who have broken their arms, et cetera. Uh, New York and London are looking at bringing scooters in as part of the transportation mix. It fits in a Saigon, for example, Ho Chi Minh City. There is no way you can drive a car. People have to be on mopeds and motorcycles. I've been there three times, and there is no way you can get a car or any number of cars through the density of, uh, bicycle and, uh, moped traffic. So these adjustments are coming. They're going to have to be made. The private car is going to be limited in its access. Uh, it's not going away. We love our cars. Our cars are an extension of our homes. They've got our staff in them. Uh, our food, our books, our tapes, our junk. Uh, and so when we get in our car, we think we're home already. And that's very hard to get over. A, a general vehicle, a taxi, a bus, a tram, doesn't have that same sense of it's me. However, these changes are coming. They're going to be accelerated because of the pandemic as we move into the different normal that awaits us.
Let me, let me, let me switch to this. So Commissioner, I want to get your take on something you brought up, which is Tesla. Do I, do you guys see this?
It drops out a little. What is it you're showing us? Is Tesla's stock fluctuating? It has been for a while.
Yeah. So what, what, what's your prediction of what's gonna happen with Tesla? Let me see if I can put this, this thing up. What, what's the good and the bad and the ugly about this deal with Tesla? Do we want them here? Do we, we're good with it? What's your prediction?
The county has signed a contract with them and, um, they put a lot of energy and effort into it. So I would be surprised uh, if they did not come. And they, um, one of the negotiators told me that, um, the, uh, is this after their quarterly earnings? After they announced their quarterly earnings?
This is today's chart as it is the last 12 months.
Okay.
I think their quarterly earnings are, I, I don't know if they're announced today, but I mean, it's, look at the skyrocketing. I mean, it's, it's the most valuable, uh, car company in the world. Uh, you keep wrong with, uh, you know, attracting them and working with them. They're gonna generate a lot of jobs. If you haven't been to a Tesla factory, it's unbelievable, but it's.
I think the ripple effects of it are, are huge. We urged them to look at the model from San Antonio when Toyota came in, which is fascinating, called the Five Compadres. And Henry Cisneros had a hand in constructing it. But, uh, the idea was to increase wealth in the Hispanic community and increase the number of higher paying jobs for Hispanic residents in San Antonio. And so they brought in, um, people who were very successful owners of supply chain businesses for Toyota to mentor local business people and then joint venture with them to create the, uh, supply chain business in San Antonio uh, with, they, they call them the Five Compadres. These five Hispanic, uh, uh, business leaders, and there's a female compadres, one, one woman. But, um, we urged Tesla to look at, so doing something very intentional like that. I will say there was a lot of criticism about the level of pay. They agreed to a minimum of $15 an hour, and that is below what the state of Texas requires for a manufacturing facility to qualify for the state enterprise fund monies. They're below the state average, which is not good.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, but it's, but it's not good. So a lot of people were critical of Tesla coming here and being able to get these, probably about half of what they have to pay in California. They obviously are stating a lot on labor. So we, we have pushed them and required them to meet a number of, of, um, thresholds that they've agreed to in the contract. But I think, uh, what I've said to people is I'm not a giant fan of these kinds of subsidies, especially not for wealthy corporations. But on balance, the enormous financial benefits for the Dell Valley School District, which is one of the most impoverished in the region, are huge. Any penny they give away in tax, uh, rebates to Tesla, the state reimburses them fully, plus Tesla has to pay them $100 per person, per pupil bonus payment. So unquestionable benefits for the very poor school district of Dell Valley. Um, they also targeted people who are chronically underemployed, underpaid, uninsured, and largely stuck. And that is people who have less than a college degree. That's the main target for their workforce. Uh, so I saw a lot of benefits for that. And then the other was the, the property tax revenue for the, for the, the county of Travis. Current site generates $6,400 a year in property tax payments to Travis County. Even with the rebate, Tesla would generate, uh, over that 10-year period, $8.8 million in property tax revenue. And unfortunately, we have a bad, um, uh, governance and tax structure in Texas. It's reliant on property taxes, which are regressive. But that's where we are today. And so this would be a net enormous increase in tax revenue for, for Travis County, even with the rebates. But we've tried to design in worker, we have, we're designed in some worker safety requirements and monitoring and compliance and third-party auditing. And they don't get their rebate if they don't meet, uh, these thresholds that they committed. So, um, at the end of the day, I thought it was worth it, and particularly because of the potential ripple effects of having frankly, such an advanced, um, automotive manufacturing facility in our community. Um, they are doing things that most of the other large car manufacturers aren't even thinking of. Well, now they're starting to think of it now, I think, because of the success of Tesla. But we have to transition our automotive, uh, uh, industry to electric vehicles. It cannot literally survive if we continue to rely on the burning of fossil fuels, uh, to, to fuel our transportation infrastructure. I know we're almost out of time, but the one last thing I want to say about digitization. Our public health system, our public health system, which we rely on for managing the COVID pandemic, is still relying on faxes for reporting on the test results. That their, their infrastructure is crumbling due to chronic underinvestment over years, and we have got to pay attention to that, or we'll never be able to solve these problems.
Absolutely. Well, I, I wanna, we can bleed over a little bit. I wanna, I want to commend you and I want the guys to, to chime in and I, I'm telling you, Commissioner, um, and you know, I wish I could have been in a, a, you know, fly on the wall with all these conversations and ponderings, but Elon Musk, and I've never met the guy, is our Thomas Edison. And Tesla is going to be the most successful car company ever in the history of mankind. And you guys and you guys agreeing to bring them to Travis County will transform Austin forever beyond anything we have ever dreamed of.
And let me just say this, Andres, Karen Thompson would not have agree, agreed with you 20 years ago. Because when Austin
Never sure.
56% of our people have college education.
You can't be absolutely
On the technology level. And we were not, we were not a favorite bringing Toyota here. But as the Commissioner laid out, it's such benefits. But I can tell you this, it's a big shift in the type of companies that come to Austin, Texas. Uh, with, with what they pay people and, and those kind of things. So I think is manufacturing is always interesting. And I think I can say this historically, we were not about bringing manufacturing to Austin unless it was on what we call the software, high-tech kind of, so to me, bringing them here is a huge, huge change for the 25th, 21st century.
Clean manufacturing. Most manufacturing has a history of, of pollution and, and being harmful for the environment. This is a different kind of manufacturing operation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It is.
I would like to, can I speak a minute?
Yes, yes.
Point out that a company that is in the forefront won't necessarily always be in the forefront. Uh, things change. Now you have exceptions. Google has maintained its position. Others have uh, developed early sclerosis and have not been as creative. He could of Tesla. And I'm a big fan. Is that it has been immensely creative. Elon Musk has changed space exploration. He's changed, uh, digging holes in the ground. He's changed, uh, how we make electricity. I mean, he's been a phenomenon, uh, as, uh, Steve Jobs was at Apple. Apple is not the same company without him. Will Tesla be? He won't live forever, or he could be removed. He's not an easy man. He's not a loved man among those around him, but he is a phenomenon and he has been immensely creative. I think that other car companies will be working very hard to catch him. And eventually they may catch him, so pass him. That has happened. I'm looking at a lot of the things that have happened. Freddie Laker and his cheap airline to Europe. It was passed over, but it was a pioneer. The pioneers don't always, and we, we talked about them, uh, about, um, uh, the early days of, of electricity, you've got to remember Tesla. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have alternating current probably, or we wouldn't have got it for a long time without him. And yet he pretty well was shoved out of the way because of his, uh, very difficult personality and
Yeah.
relationship.
So, so, so we, we, we get it. You're doubting Thomas, and that's okay. I, I, all I say to you is that that this is a great move for Austin and it's a great move for the county. And there are repercussions in the supply chain and what's gonna come of it is unimaginable. And so congratulations.
I think there's, there's a lot of upside, which was why we did it. You know, I had asked one of our IT people from the county if he could write up some of the digital transformations of the county. And he's been on the call. If, uh, if it's all right with them, Andres, I'm happy to share that document with you. I don't know if you post documents as part of the uh, re, um, posting of this discussion.
We, we can, we can, we can. So this session will be, there's a page on our website where the session will be listed that people can, uh, come and listen to it. Uh, we could post the paper right next to it.
Yeah, I'll check with them and see if it's okay to share because they go into more detail about, um, uh, what we've been doing with the county.
Absolutely. So unfortunately, like all the great things, we have to come to an end. Uh, I wish we could stay longer. Maybe we can have you back, uh, take a break.
Anytime. This is one of my
We'll, we'll have you back and check with you maybe, uh, at the end of the year, see how it's going and how's Tesla behaving and, and what have you. But, uh, thanks, thanks for being here today. And I thank you for everything you do. And thank you for you being a champion of the environment and, and the poor and the, on the not where, not, not the non-fair, you know, non-treated fairly people and, and all those things. You're an amazing human being. I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It was great to be with you all. And I loved meeting you, Llewellyn. This is really a treat.
You're a very astute woman.
And you remember this, no matter what we bring to Austin, no matter who we bring to Austin, the greatest thing to come to Austin was on the road again. Can't wait to get back on the road again. The life I love is making music with my friends. And I can't wait to get on the road again. Let's not forget Willie coming to Austin.
Bravo, bravo, bravo. Thank you all so much.
Bringing the entrepreneurs, uh, keep bringing the entrepreneurs. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna stop recording now.